Hafadee, welcome everyone to the Guam Legislature. We're here for a public hearing. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is called to order. It's Friday, June 14th. The time is 4:00 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notice for this public hearing was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Friday, June 7th and Wednesday, June 12th, 2024. Notice was also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on June 4th and June 12th, 2024. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. For those testifying, please identify yourself for record-keeping purposes. This hearing will be transcribed. We're here for Bill Number 313, which is sponsored by Senator Joe S. Augustine and Senator Roy A. B. Canata. It is an act to amend Public Law 21-146 to allow for the construction of a school on Lot Number 10119-12-R2, municipality of Dedido, and to authorize the Guam Housing Corporation and the Guam Department of Education to enter into a memorandum of agreement for such. All right, I will allow the sponsor to introduce the bill. Senator S. Augustine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and Chair. Hafadee to everyone here today. Bill 313, as the Speaker mentioned, was introduced by myself, Senator Joe S. Augustine, co-sponsored by Senator Roy Canata, and it seeks to amend Public Law 21-146 to allow for the construction of a temporary school and to authorize the Guam Housing Corporation and the Guam Department of Education to enter into a memorandum of agreement for such. We all know that for the past year, Typhoon Ma'wah has forced the Simon Sanchez School community out of their dilapidating campus. This resulted in them having to endure double session with the JFK Islanders family. And for over a decade, the Sharks community has been patiently waiting for the construction of their new campus. And thank you, Madam Speaker, for hearing this bill, as it will add schools to the authorized use of the property that allows for housing and public spaces on property owned by the Guam Housing Corporation. This measure will provide DOE with a viable option to erect the temporary Sanchez campus to bring the Sharks home and eliminate the double session. While we know of the successes of the Sanchez students, we've also heard the stories of how the double session have negatively affected students, families, faculty and staff. This property is in a very close proximity to the existing school, which will assist in minimizing disruption and contribute to the seamless transition during and after the construction phase. Additionally, the bill authorized the Guam Housing Corporation and the Guam Department of Education to enter into a memorandum of agreement. Highlights of the MOU would include the following: allocation of 15 acres for the temporary school facility with a potential for DOE infrastructure development to offset potential rental costs. Guam Housing Corporation will maintain utilization of the infrastructure to create affordable rental units. Assurance of durable modular units strategically designed for both functionality and longevity to accommodate the educational needs of the students. A clear timeline of the building of Simon Sanchez High School to ensure accountability and avoid prolonged occupation of the temporary site. Provision for environmental assessment and infrastructure integration, ensuring minimal disruption to the surrounding area and leveraging existing resources efficiently. At the heart of this collaboration between DOE and Guam Housing Corporation is to bring our Sharks home, bring them back to Gigo. Although this is an interim solution, it will assist the Sharks return to some normalcy in their school careers. I urge my colleagues to support this vital legislation, ensuring that we meet the immediate needs of our northern students, who have been very patient while paving the way for a long-term educational excellence. Sisus Masi. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi, Senator S. Augustine, and also Sisus Masi to Senator Roy Canata, who's also a co-sponsor of this bill, and thank you for being here today. So Bill 313-37 was introduced on May 28th. It was referred to my committee in May 31st. We did immediately set it for a public hearing. That's how we are here today, has pretty much expedited because of the urgency of the situation that the students at Simon Sanchez face. We'll now hear from those who've signed up to testify, beginning with our former speaker, Dr. Judy Wampat. Thank you for being here.
Hafadee, Speaker Cholahi, Senator S. Augustine, Senator Canata, who are the primary authors of Bill 313. I am Dr. Judith Wampat, the Special Assistant to the Governor as her Chief Advisor on Education. On behalf of the Leon Guerrero Tenori Administration, I am here to provide testimony on Bill 313. Bill 313 authorizes the Guam Housing Corporation to expand their mission to develop no less than 200 moderately priced multifamily, multi-story housing rental units and allows the remaining portion of the property to be developed and used for schools, public parks, open spaces and recreational facilities. The administration supports this amendment to the existing law. Oftentimes, developers will build homes without consideration of their impact to existing schools and the community. Unfortunately, large developers do not build schools and parks for the children and families living in those housing developments. No doubt, it will definitely improve the quality of life for the families and the community. On a side note, there must be legislation for large developers to do the same, the same type of mission that Guam Housing Corporation has. Expanding the mission of Guam Housing Corporation to include schools is laudable. It's also important to note that various options have been proposed and discussed in depth by Guam Department of Education, Governor's Office, the PA team of the Guam Recovery Office, Guam Homeland Security and Office of Civil Defense, the Territorial or Coordinating Office, the Director of Infrastructure Brand in DC, and many others on identifying the best option that is most feasible, expeditious, financially viable, vetted by FEMA, as the most acceptable option. The administration wants the best option for the temporary classrooms and will work diligently to make that happen. Additionally, Bill 313 authorizes the Guam Department of Education to enter into memorandum of agreement or such legal instrument relative to the temporary use of a portion of Lot Number 10119-12-R2 for school. I hope that the legal advisors will exercise care in drafting the memorandum of understanding that is reasonable in which that legal agreement or contract does not obligate any further financial burden to the government. Senators, I thank you for this opportunity to testify on Bill 313, and I'll be more than happy to meet with you individually if you'd like to discuss the progress made. Thank you. Sisus Masi.
Sisus Masi, Speaker Wampat, and now Education Advisor to the Office of the Governor of Guam. Superintendent, Dr. Swanson.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon. Excuse me, I don't remember what day it is sometimes. And thank you, Senators. It is my pleasure to provide testimony and support of Bill 313 regarding authority to enter into a memorandum of agreement between Guam Housing Corporation and Guam Department of Education. As you know, we are currently in the midst of the process to develop a temporary campus for the Simon Sanchez High School student body. Construction progress of the new campus, once it is contracted, will take several years, and the current arrangement requiring double-session attendance on the JFK High School campus is not optimal. The long-term negative effect on both student bodies and inequities imposed on both student groups leaves them with a lesser high school experience and engagement opportunities over time compared to the other school, high schools in the system. The loss of the co-curricular activities for both student bodies is not acceptable over the long term of the student's high school career. We're working to overcome this situation by working through this body and other agencies to develop and open a temporary facility large enough to accommodate 1,600 Simon Sanchez students for the next three to four years while the new school is being built. Passage of Bill Number 313 will help clear the way to that end by authorizing both entities to enter into a memorandum of understanding for the use of the land to locate modular classroom buildings to supplement the usable classrooms already on the Simon Sanchez campus. Passage of the bill will help clear the way to solving the double-session challenges for both student bodies and improve the high school experience for nearly 3,000 students. Thank you for your leadership and support of the Guam education system and the students that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swanson. Could you please state your name for the record, please?
Dr. Eric Swanson, Superintendent, Guam Department of Education.
Sisus Masi. And now President Fanglinen.
Hafadee, buenas, and good afternoon. Speaker Cholahi, Honorable Senator Joe S. Augustine, and Honorable Senator Roy A. B. Canata. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 133-37 COR, which is an act to amend Public Law 21-146 to allow for the construction of a school on Lot Number 10119-12-R2, municipality of Dedido, and to authorize the Guam Housing Corporation and the Guam Department of Education to enter into a memorandum of agreement for such. The challenges that the Simon Sanchez High School community has faced regarding the state of their school facilities are widely known, and the rebuilding of their campus is badly needed. DOE Superintendent Dr. Kenneth Swanson has continually expressed concerns that the current double-session status for the students is not conducive to the mental, social and academic growth of both Simon Sanchez students nor their whole student body, particularly when you consider that this will be a years-long process. Standing up an unshared temporary campus that the Sharks can hold home while their permanent campus is being built will help to alleviate some of these concerns. Bill 1, I'm sorry, Bill 313-37 proposes to authorize the Guam Housing Corporation and the Guam Department of Education to enter into a memorandum of agreement to allow for the temporary use of portions of Lot Number 10119-12-R2 as a temporary campus for Simon Sanchez High School. Further, it also calls for the inclusion of schools under the allowable usage and development on said lot, which was transferred to Guam Housing Corporation through Public Law 21-146. While Bill 313-37 COR is the initial step in this process, we understand that it will take a concerted, good-faith effort by all parties involved. GAC is ready to work with the Guam Department of Education, the Office of the Governor, the Guam Legislature and all other relevant agencies through the process of standing up a temporary Simon Sanchez High School campus. Therefore, we wish to express our support of Bill 313-37 as part of the overall effort to bring the Sharks back to their home village of Gigo. Thank you, and I'll be here for any questions.
Can you please state your name again for the record?
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Eva Fanglinen, President of Guam Housing Corporation.
Sisus Masi. All right, I would like to also recognize the President, Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, Senator Brown. And the sponsor, you may begin with the questions for the panel.
No questions.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to present testimony? All right, if not. Senator Canata, any questions for the panel? None? Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to, I think we all would love to see this because I remember going to an education meeting, a hearing that our chairman was holding in Gigo one evening, and it, you know, it's the earlier part of the year, we're still leaving December of last year, and it was, you know, it gets dark very early. By 6 o'clock in the evening, it's dark. And I remember seeing the bus come up in Gigo, and these kids were getting off, and it was dark already. And I thought, oh my goodness, only to find out, these were students from Simon Sanchez that were just being taken home from JFK, and I thought, my goodness, I would not want my child getting out that time of the evening, coming home from school. And I can't imagine for the students at JFK having to get up so early in the morning. It's just not part of your normal body clock. So if this was a short-term situation, I think we'd, you know, we'd get through it. But, you know, it looks like this issue, which has drawn out for so many years, it's not going to be quickly resolved in the next year or two, or that they're going to have a campus within that time. And I don't know why. I mean, you know, the Camacho Administration built four schools, and one in two administrations they were to do it. I can't answer as to why this has taken so long, but I think we obviously need, if the opportunity is still there, particularly to use these FEMA funds for the construction. I hope they are. I want to ask the superintendent, is that still the case?
Yes, we're working with FEMA very closely on this. We have to front a fair amount of the money, but this is all doable through FEMA.
Oh, I hope so, because we just had an issue earlier this week where we had a major bomb dropped on us because of non-compliance with the Homeland Security. There's some concern about FEMA's funding of the operations there and other things that the government of Guam may be burdened with. So I just want to make sure, at least in your current discussions with them, that that's not something that's going to impact or threaten their ability to assist in funding and providing funds for the construction of this temporary campus.
At this point, we haven't had any bad news like that, not at all.
Well, I hope it stays that way. I hope you stay in very close collaboration with them because, you know, I'm sure the respective oversight chair will hold a hearing so we can get more information, but, you know, I just want to make sure we don't lose that opportunity because of mismanagement here, that we lose federal funds. Do you have an estimated timeline on how soon, once the land's transferred and it's identified for that use, that it would take to get these modules or these type of temporary facilities that are being talked about? And then I also want to know, not just in putting it in place, but is there a possibility for future use of these facilities? Because obviously, once Simon Sanchez is constructed, the students will move into the main campus, the new campus. What is the plans for these temporary facilities? Are they going to remain on the property? What's the plan for GOR? Is GOR going to want the property back for other uses? Can these, you know, these classrooms be used in other locations to supplement and support DOE's operations or whatever the case may be, so that we can think beyond just building them? But what's the plan to maintain them, and then what's the use after?
The use after is yet to be determined in the memorandum of understanding. That has to be worked out. There are proposals that some, if not all, would remain there, but they could be converted because of their size, but that's a conversation we have yet to have. We have to clear this hurdle first. The other part of it that we know we have to do is some site preparation with regard to infrastructure with stormwater runoff, sewer, water, power. Those utilities are there on site, but there has to be preliminary engineering work done. The cost estimate for the buildings themselves is installed, shipped and installed is right at $17.5 million.
You know, the scary thing is we're going to spend this amount of money, be it FEMA money or our own, because of whatever the reason is that we've not been able to construct the school. I'd rather see that $17 million, obviously, as we all would, to go into long-term investment. I did want to ask, because we had discussed this at a previous hearing, and I had inquired about the cafeteria facilities, the gym facilities, and you mentioned that these portions of the existing Simon Sanchez school would still be used for that?
Yes.
Is that still the case?
Yes.
Are these facilities still usable for that purpose?
There are about 30 classrooms that are usable, along with the gym and the cafeteria.
And are you planning on also incorporating those classrooms into the operations with the temporary facilities?
Yes, they would include those. Otherwise, when the net need for classrooms is approximately 70.
Okay.
And so we're talking about 30 to 35 temporary buildings plus existing campus as well.
And that would be able to accommodate the needs for the students to be at their school campus then?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll be able to safely cordon off those areas that are not usable or mold-infested or whatever the case may be?
Yes, that's correct. Close off those parts. And the phasing plan for the construction of the new school is build a new one first and then demolish the existing building, so we wouldn't be, students wouldn't be in the area of construction.
And they wouldn't be impacted by it. Well, again, I hope that the next time we have these discussions, that plans have moved further along to determine again, after the interim use, what other use of the facilities, and also in your engagement with FEMA to inquire about that. I mean, if once these facilities are, the buildings for the classrooms are turned over to Department of Education, if they are indeed DOE property, and they are mobile or they're, you know, future uses, so that this investment, which is significant, I mean, $17 million is nothing to sneeze about, and it probably costs a little more when you get into the actual weeds of construction, that there's some continued use for these facilities that can still benefit our students.
There are a number of considerations yet to be worked out. At this point too, though, it's important to understand that the funds we're using are reimbursable through FEMA, so that's a 90% reimbursement, so we get a good deal of that money back.
Well, I hope you guys keep good accounting, because from what we're at least preliminary hearing, that's been the problem, is the government of Guam has not been able to properly account for these funds. And, you know, we need FEMA's help when we have disasters. They're our first line of support that we look at and depend on. And when we hear that there's issues of concern from the federal government, that our government has not properly accounted, does not have the proper documentation, you know, of course, I'm always looking whose head rolls, and I haven't heard or seen anything other than, oh, we don't have it. And I just don't think that rides with regards to the use of public funds. I mean, that opens up a whole door for corruption and other things. And I'm concerned what impact that will have on the future ability of us to receive FEMA support. Your project, that, you know, they're looking at funding and supporting, which I'm very hopeful, I'm happy that they're able to do it, but we have to make sure that there's proper accounting of all those funds, so we don't end up in that same situation. We need to clean the process moving forward, so we don't risk or lose these federal funds, because we desperately will need them the next time we have another natural disaster or circumstance like this, where the federal assistance is greatly needed. So I hope your people keep track.
We'll keep very close track.
Very much so. I don't know why people don't do that. That's their day-to-day job, and they don't execute it. But I can't answer for that. It's just disappointing, I think, to hear that. So I'm just saying, I hope you are very careful in moving forward, how those federal funds are used and how they're properly accounted for. I do want to ask Guam Housing, what are your plans? Or is inevitably that the property will be returned back for your use, or what are you planning for this land after?
Okay, we know that there was discussion that if indeed, what we're going to get out of this, Senator Brown, is that we're going to, DOE will have to ensure that the infrastructure is installed, right? That's all part of their responsibility. So they'll leave that behind for our use, and also probably some of those classrooms will probably stay with us, depending on the condition of it, because our mandate also requires for rental units, right? And so if that's something that can be worked out also, so all of this will be included in the MOA, if not possible.
Well, we'd like to know. I mean, either that, because, I mean, this would be adjacent to the existing new school. I think whatever activity you have there, you want to be compatible with the school operations and the new facility. So, I mean, this is an interesting input, that they may be wanting to keep these buildings for rental. I hope you put together a concise package and presentation so that we know what the intended purpose is, the public knows, and the families and the students, more importantly, know what the intended use is for these new buildings, temporary buildings that are being put in place, and then what will happen after, especially if the intention of Guam Housing is to use it for something else other than educational facilities. Please make sure you have that, because now we really want to know the details, and so we can move forward. I hope to see this executed a lot faster than Simon Sanchez's construction, because as you know, Mr. Superintendent, looking at our facilities, there are many schools that are older than Simon Sanchez, that were built back in the late '50s and the early '60s, many of those elementary schools. I remember Simon Sanchez back in 1973, when it was first opened, when it was a brand-new school. We had to go up there as elementary students for a project. So it's not the only school that needs construction, and the funds are not endless or not limitless. But I hope you're able to execute this project. I'm dumbfounded as to why it's taken this long and why it's now costing us more money to actually construct it, because we have to do an interim facility. But anyway, with that, thank you for providing your input, and I hope we get more detailed information as you move forward. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I have a couple of questions. So first of all, is there a draft MOU in progress?
We have, we have not got that far yet. We have put our legal counsels in touch with each other and got initial, that was one of the things that surfaced, the need to make this amendment, so that we could proceed with it, the legal review that the Guam Housing attorneys have done. So now the next step, if we are successful in this, and if FEMA says yes, go with this project, then that's the next step, is to get the MOU hammered out. Preliminary work should already be underway.
All right, because in the testimony of the Education Advisor, Office of the Governor, it says, "I hope legal advisors will exercise care in drafting." So who, which legal advisors are being used? If not the Office of the Governor's, DOE and Guam Housing? Those? And who is ensuring FEMA compliance or FEMA acceptance?
That's through our office. We're working that, yes.
Is that already been secured? You said this is reimbursable by FEMA. Can you clarify that? What do you mean by that?
The initial conversations we've had with the FEMA team is that this is in the reimbursable range for the 90% reimbursement. We have been developing and providing that information in a very long-term project, not only with this project, but our other reimbursements as well with FEMA, but we've updated all of that information with them and provided more of it, and we have the details of the projects submitted to them for evaluation. This has been an ongoing process. It's not something we've done quickly.
When do you expect their answer?
I would hope within the next two to three weeks. The sooner the better.
All right. And then, well, again, so Speaker Wampat, in your testimony, you said, "Various options have been proposed and discussed in depth by DOE, Governor's Office, the Recovery Office, Homeland Security, Civil Defense and others on identifying the best option that is most feasible, expeditious, financially viable, vetted by FEMA, as the most acceptable option." Is this vetted by FEMA as the most acceptable option of all the options that have been discussed?
No, they have not. Right now, there is no project number or public assistance number from FEMA identifying then that this is a project that they have approved for reimbursement. So the very first thing that has to be done, which was today, the deadline to provide additional information to FEMA in DC, not necessarily here, then the second thing is to get the third extension, to be able then to pursue this project for the temporary classroom. And so all I know right now is that the information has been already put together. The memo, I believe, has been sent today. So you're right, Dr. Swanson is correct, that it may take two, three weeks to get, hopefully sooner, and once then they approve of the various options, because in that memo, they really talked about all the different options that Dr. Swanson has provided, and then they would review it to see then what would be the most feasible, what would be the most expeditious to move forward with. And once they do that, then automatically, then it becomes, if it gets a PA number, then it becomes a reimbursable, you know, project.
Okay, great. So who is that memo to, and who's it from?
It would be from the Governor's Office. Oh, let me see, because I have it here.
Do you have a copy? Would we be able?
No, I don't. They just sent me the email. I don't have it. It's from, it's from you. It's from, it's from you, right? Yeah, yes, you're right. From the superintendent to Mr. Joseph Cabana.
All right, FEMA.
Yes, the Guam Recovery Office.
So is it going through the governor's office also? Or just you, Ms. Dr. Swanson?
Well, all the individuals, all the different organizations that have been involved, they basically would, are part of, they were being given copies of it so that they will keep them in the loop because they have been in discussion from the very beginning.
All right. So can we get a copy of that memo, Dr. Swanson, if it's from you?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. And, all right, so we're, what if FEMA does not approve this as the most viable option? Will you still go forward with this project?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of the question.
If FEMA does not approve this as a reimbursable project, do you still intend to go forward? Because you're using your money and hoping for 90% reimbursement.
And this, and this is the, this is the question when we have to go back and look at that in terms of the total cost, if it's not reimbursable, whether or not we can absorb that.
When will you decide that?
That should be in the next two weeks. Well, we have our budget hearing on Monday. So that, within the next week to 10 days, we'll be able to nail that down.
And you estimate the cost to be $70 million, I overheard?
That's, no, that's the buildings. The estimates we have on a couple of the options, right at the $25 million level to be complete, not counting the furniture and equipment, we've already, we're already buying that anyway.
So what do you mean, the buildings? What's 70 million?
The $17 million is, not 70.
Sorry.
17 is the prefabrication shipment installation of the buildings themselves.
Okay, so 17 million for the buildings?
And infrastructure, we're estimating another eight to take care of that. And that's concrete pads, sewer lines, water lines, power lines.
All right. And how long do you expect this to take?
Once the civil work is done, the manufacturer is saying 90 days to ship and install.
What do you mean, once the civil work is done? But how long, okay, let's say you get FEMA approval in three weeks. How long would the civil work take? Because in some estimates, they tell us at least a year.
I would estimate two to three months. We're targeting to be ready to use the facility at right about Christmas break. So that would be, that's the target we're working from.
Okay. And you're estimating that the Simon Sanchez rebuild is going to take three to four years?
Based on what I've seen since I've been back here, the course of construction and understanding that the contracts have not been let, we're still trying to get the construction management contract approved. So I'm trying to set expectations for everybody involved that it's going to be a little while. I haven't got any control over that part of it.
What part of it?
When the contracts to build the school will be issued, that's, that's not in our hands. So that whole procurement process to select contractors and do all that work is not something.
It's all at DPW?
It's all DPW.
And what is your understanding of the status? Where are we?
At this point, my understanding is it's not totally funded yet so that, and I do know that the construction management contract has been solicited, but it has not been awarded.
So it's been solicited, they've submitted their responses, but there's no award and you're saying it's not fully funded?
That's my understanding.
All right. And that's at DPW?
But at the same time.
Yes.
I've got 1,600 kids to take care of.
Yes.
And so I've got to do that the best way I can. And so these, the facilities that we're looking at using are rated at category five storm resistance, so they're pretty solid. They'll be there a while. I don't know how long they would be in that facility.
All right. That, I appreciate your efforts to find options instead of double sessions, to give them a temporary campus. So I'm fully in support of a temporary campus. I just want to know too, what are all of our expectations? So you expect that these buildings are usable for three to four years?
That's correct.
You have an idea of what you're trying to procure already?
Right, yes. And we looked at some other ones that have been used on Saipan and the recommendation came back that not to try to go that long with them. They didn't hold up as well.
With a different kind?
Yes.
All right. And you're hoping yours are typhoon resistant and can last for 40 years, four years?
That's what I'm after.
All right. Why did you decide to put it here at this property? You've examined other options.
Which other options that we?
Well, you said you've examined other options and you, why did you decide to put it here on this lot next to the old Simon Sanchez?
It would involve less difficulty in terms of facilities that we still need because you need a gymnasium, you need a cafeteria. So we looked at sharing space with the GW campus, but we couldn't locate a spot there that didn't cause issues with storm drainage. We looked at another, an elementary campus, JM Guerrero campus, which has a lot of extra acreage, but there was not access to a gym that we could use because of the, it's all the one that belongs to the parks and recreation is already heavily used. So we went through two or three of those different scenarios and this is the one that, they all involve adding infrastructure, they all involve bringing in the facilities and having them installed. But this one is, was made, we were made aware of it being available to us and the opportunity to do this kind of adjustment. And it's immediately adjacent to those facilities that you need in support of that many kids.
All right.
And it gets the kids in their neighborhood.
Yes, that's great. I was not aware that any parts of the existing Simon Sanchez campus are still usable because the plans for the new Simon Sanchez campus are to demolish the entire structure. Isn't that correct?
We can, we can maintain the parts that the principal's gone through with her team and looked very, very closely at, along with our maintenance folks. We can maintain the science classrooms, the CTE classrooms, the cafeteria, and the gym to keep, to keep that usable and safe.
Was that, was that, was DPW aware of that? Has DPW agreed? Because in their plans, it is to demolish everything, right?
That's, that's correct. Well, there's, there's still another 40 classrooms that are not usable.
Right.
And so when you look at the whole of the school, it needs to be replaced.
Okay. But has anyone determined that your plan, for example, the classrooms and the cafeteria and the gym are going to be usable for real?
That's, my maintenance folks have gone through them and they're saying we can, we can do it with what we have.
Okay. I hope we get that more concrete through DPW or Public Health. I don't know. Yes, all right.
Well, we're going to have engineers over the site as well.
Okay, great. All right. And, okay, so for Guam Housing, the original, we're making one small change to the original law, which was passed years, years and years ago. And that was in 1993. And it authorized Guam Housing to take control of 34.8 acres of property to use for, at minimum, 200 moderately priced multifamily, multi-story housing rental units. And the remaining property, after the housing units, would be used for public parks, open spaces, and recreational facilities. For this, so this bill would amend it so that that remaining property can be used for schools. But it sounds to me like your intention is actually to use the 34.8 acres or parts of it and not just the remaining portion. Did Guam Housing go forward with the housing units?
No.
Never, right? So the 34.8 acres are still available?
No, not 34.8. There's only about 25 remaining out of the 34.8.
Okay, why is that?
Because there's two 12-unit apartments that are situated currently.
Is that Guam Housing's?
Yes.
Oh, so you did go forward with some?
Yes.
Okay. So the, all right. But why didn't you not use it for further houses, up to 200 units?
I'm sorry, we don't have the financial capability to do that. And so that's why we have not done anything other than those two 12 units currently today.
Okay. Aren't you going to repeat that? If you could just repeat that a little louder?
Oh, currently, or as of today, we don't have the financial capacity to build the rental units that was authorized by this law. So I think because of the proposal before us, I think it's a win-win situation with the government helping another government agency when they approached us with this proposal. So.
I have no objection to helping. My, my question is, the original law passed years ago was for moderately priced housing. We are in dire need of moderately priced housing. We are pulling bills out of committees because of the lack of affordable housing supposedly. And I just want to know how we can, you know, justify this. It's been sitting since 1993. All right, so. And there are no plans, you're saying, right? You're hoping you will get infrastructure and that will make perhaps some affordable housing an option or something else?
We did an RFI back in 2019 or 2020, but then of course COVID came. And so that just kind of didn't make us move forward with having to put out an RFI.
RFI, request for information, okay.
Or interest for that matter.
For the multifamily units? Okay, great. All right. I just want to acknowledge the chairperson of the Guam Housing. Thank you for being here, Mr. Florrick, Frank Florrick, and other Guam Housing staff. Thank you. All right. Well, I like the idea of a temporary campus. I'm glad that you've examined other options. I understand why now that you want to put it here. I was not aware at all that there were any usable parts of this campus. According to DPW's plans, they were going to demolish it all. So I hope this works. Now, we're looking at this for kind of a long period, three to four years, and you are assuring us, or you're hoping to get FEMA reimbursement, but really, there is no assurance of that at this point. And. Financially viable, we're expecting to spend about $25 million of DOE funds. Is this general funds or other funds?
It has to be local funds in order to be reimbursable. Federal can't reimburse federal.
Okay. All right. So I'm hoping we can see the MOU as soon as you have a draft, just so we get an idea what, what any of each of you's obligations is going to be. And the MOU will only be between DOE and Guam Housing, not the governor's office? And then, all right. Are you looking at this type of an option for any of the other schools that are going through double sessions?
I believe I can honestly tell you I won't have any other schools in double session coming this school year.
That's good news. All right.
So if we can undo this one, then we don't have that.
Are you saying the rest of the schools have been repaired?
I'm sorry?
Are you saying that the rest of the schools have been repaired and we're back to usable?
Yeah, the last one that was doubled up was, was a stumble middle and what we have, that's a whole different set of issues. But we have gone, gone ahead and fronted the replacement and repair of the air conditioning units on that building so we can get the kids back in.
I saw that procurement notice in the paper today, I think, right?
Yes, and that, that's in addition to what the lease costs us. But, you know, my, my determination is we have to uncouple the two schools because it's really impeding the instructional program in both middle schools. So I'm going back on their campus and that's how we're going to do it.
All right, thank you. Has DOE or Guam Housing exam, or the governor's office checked if any of the infrastructure funds from the Biden infrastructure law can be used for this project? For example, GWA is planning, I guess, some projects. Can they use it for this? Since it's, all right.
We'll, we'll be looking under every rock we can think of to turn over for extra funding. That's, that's, we have to get creative about that.
Okay. All right. I have no other questions. Allow the sponsor to close. Senator Sinagastin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to just emphasize that number one, this bill is to allow or give an option. That's all it is. And if this option works, then the students, the students of Jigu are back in Jigu. That's number one. Number two, if it's determined during this process, because we need, the bill needs to pass, because no matter what kind of MOU you want to draft together, if it doesn't pass, MOU doesn't even hold paper. There's no need for an MOU because the law restricts it. So when the bill passes, I ask my colleagues to support the bill so it can pass so that when you start talking to FEMA, you can actually say there's a law that allows you to do an MOU. Because with all the amendments to the law, you can only talk all day long, but it will not carry any weight to FEMA. FEMA looks at you, does the law allow you to do that? No. So it doesn't matter and you'd have to move on. So I would just hope that my colleagues will support the bill, get it passed, then do your MOU and then get it back to us. Provide us a copy. We would love to see that. Because at the end of the day, when we talk about the budget, we're going to be looking at how much money you're spending on this school. We're definitely going to be looking at it, even though we may hear your budget next week, in the months to come, we will know before August, what is the total cost you're going to spend. And that will have to be revealed when we're, when we're looking at the whole GovGon's budget. When we get to that point, we're going to know what the impact is across the board. And the turnaround is that if the MO, if this bill passes, the availability for rental homes is, is more allowable for Guam Housing because why? Infrastructure be in place, something you don't have today. The clearing would happen, there's movement. And unfortunately, in the past, in 1990 or '93 or whatever date that was that this law originated, started, there was just no money and there was no, there was no goal for anyone to invest in Guam Housing. It's obvious because this is the, this is the first opportunity now to help Guam Housing to move on and get rental homes because there's homes being built in Jigu. And with that, Madam Chair, I would just hope that the bill would be wrapped up, submitted so we can get it to the floor and get this passed, this bill passed, we can, the MOU can, can be viable. We could look at an option. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Jesus Massey, Senator Sinagastin, and to all of you who've come to testify, Superintendent Swanson, could you please ask DPW for a written report on the status of the Simon Sanchez? And what do you mean by they haven't identified the funding for the construction manager or what the delay is so that we could all be on the same page on that?
Yes, we'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
And report back to you.
There being no further testimony, we will consider the hearing on Bill 26, I mean, sorry, 313-37COR duly heard. Jesus Massey, and thank you again.